Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board, our joint meeting with the Planning Board and Select Board, December 18th, 2023, Wacoite Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Broadcast live in the local cable channel eight, stream live on the town Mashpee website. And I'd like to convene the meeting at six o'clock, and I'd like to convene the meeting in a joint meeting with the Planning Board in open session. Can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the full republic which stands, nation under God, with liberty and justice.
Quick moment of silence, please. This is like a super mic. It sounds like it's echoing, so I don't know. Move this away. Presentation to the Draft Housing Production Plan, Town Planner, Mr. Evan LaHeer, and Eric Planning Group.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. I'm joined tonight by Alexis Lanzalata, who's been working with me from Barrett Planning Group on the update of the town's housing production plan. We've been endeavoring to go through the community engagement for the update of the housing production plan since about June of 2023, with the hopes of bringing you a draft plan this month for review and adoption, subsequent adoption, by both the Planning Board and the Select Board. As you are likely aware by now, both the Planning Board and the Select Board need to adopt the updated housing production plan before we can submit the plan for review and acceptance by now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So tonight, we met last week with the Affordable Housing Committee specifically to go over the goals and the strategies that are displayed in draft form in the documents before you. And they have approved of the draft strategies as you see them now. We understand that there's going to be a desired process that you would like to take some time, you would like to take to review the draft in its current form and to provide feedback back to us so we can make those necessary amendments prior to submission to the Executive Office. We hope tonight we'd have the opportunity to present the plan to you and the process which led to the draft in its current form. Hopefully, there will be some time for questions, and we'd be more than happy to respond to those questions. Subsequent to this meeting tonight, we will take the remainder of this week to make any edits that we feel are necessary subsequent to receiving your feedback and getting the draft into, you know, a further, further refined form so that it can be advertised and posted for a public review period between now and the middle of January. We are hopeful that subsequent to the open comment period that we will advertise after this meeting this week, both the Planning Board and Select Boards would subsequently take the opportunity to deliberate and discuss the plan independently at your January meetings with the goal of having this document adopted by each entity next month. The public comment period is slated for closure at the, oh, gosh, I can't remember exactly what it is. The January 16th, which is Tuesday, we've asked the Affordable Housing Committee to review the final draft, subsequent to receipt of the public comments, subsequent to the deliberation by the Select Board and the Planning Boards, to incorporate into that final draft for their adoption on the 16th, with the hopes the Select Board and Planning Boards would put it, include it on their agenda for the following week so that we can submit this to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities before the end of January. We had hoped that by the end of December, we would have finalized the plan because we have, this was funded both by the CPC in part and by a grant through the state that is monitored and administered by the Cape Cod Commission. They've allowed us to submit our, the draft of the plan as our deliverables, so we have a little bit more time to make sure that the review process is thorough, robust, and inclusive of all the comments that we received between now and then. So as a brief overview of the general process, I'm going to then hand it over to Alexis to go through the engagement, to go through some of the survey work we have done, all of which led to the various goals and strategies that we proposed for inclusion in the plan. So back in June, we began the scope of work, and between July and September of 2023, we met with staff, we did staff interviews and toured the town with consultants. We had small group interviews with a variety of stakeholders throughout the town, held a community workshop to develop the needs assessment, and conducted an online survey and completed the draft needs assessment, which is before you, in October of 2023, all in, in coordination with the Affordable Housing Committee. From October through very recently, we held a second community meeting and additional focus groups, all towards drafting goals and strategies to support housing production in a manner that meets the needs we defined through the development of the needs assessment itself. So now we're in that final review period, and we'll hope to follow the process I just outlined for you. So with that, I would like to introduce again Alexis Lanzalata for Barrett Planning Group to run through the plan and the plan's development, and hopefully we'll get through that presentation with enough time for you to pose questions to us or ask any particular questions relative to the draft before you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, and thanks, everybody, for having me here. I know that we need to be very mindful of time, so I will try to get through the presentation just as quickly as possible. The first thing I'd like to do is just give a little bit of a very brief overview about what a housing production plan is, so you can kind of understand why some of the strategies in there are included. There are certain goals and strategies that the plan needs to include, and then there are other ones that, you know, that you'll see that maybe are not a requirement of the state, but based on the needs assessment, we have included based on, just recommendation based upon the, both the findings that we've seen in the data, but also in consultation with the community. So a big part of that, I do want to go over just a broad, broad brush of summaries, both from the LCP survey as it related to housing, and then also the HPP survey, which Evan mentioned was recently conducted, and just to kind of see where there is some overlap in between those findings, even though the surveys were, gosh, maybe a year, a little bit less than a year apart, I believe. So there are some similarities and differences, so we'll talk about that. The third bullet where it says Housing Needs Assessment Overview, I really just picked a few things to highlight because going over the entire needs assessment would be time-consuming, so I picked a few things that I thought really kind of spoke to what, you know, what we have found. And then really, most of the presentation is going to be presenting strategies to you that are professional recommendations for addressing some of those needs that have been identified in the plan. And then I probably can skip over the next steps because Evan already did touch upon those, and then open it to questions and comments. So firstly, just for context, a housing production plan has the overarching purpose of facilitating development and preservation of homes that meet the requirements of the state's affordable housing law, commonly known as Chapter 40B. So that is the purpose of a housing production plan. That doesn't mean that's the only need it can address, but that is the primary purpose. So the Planning Board and Select Board must locally adopt the housing production plan before submission to the state. The statewide goal under 40B is that at least 10% of a community's year-round housing units will be deed restricted as affordable to low- or moderate-income households. So right now, and actually, we just checked this today as well with the state, you're still at 4.66% in terms of where you are in meeting that target. So the three elements there are required to be included in a housing needs assessment. So just to note, the draft you received, I don't want to call it the Draft Housing Production Plan, that is what we will launch this week, once we get your comments, because you will notice on the cover, it says Draft Needs Assessment, Goals, and Strategies. The complete plan will, you know, have an introduction and more of the community engagement as well, but these are the required components that need to go in the plan. A housing needs assessment really is focused on demographic analysis, looking at your housing inventory and assessment, trying to determine a production of housing needs in part based upon those demographics, but also what the community has identified as housing priorities. The needs assessment also needs to include an analysis of constraints to housing and plans to mitigate those constraints. So it's not enough just to say, well, these constraints exist. Oh, well, the plan has to suggest, for the constraints that can be addressed, ways to address that. And then infrastructure capacity, that is often kind of wrapped into that assessment of the development constraints, because infrastructure is a big consideration there. The housing goals in the plan, it needs to address a mix of housing types that is feasible and consistent with need, so that feasible means feasible within the housing market conditions. And then it also needs to include a numerical housing production goal, which is quite simply based on 0.5% of your year-round housing stock. That's how the state defines that numerical housing production goal. And then lastly, the plan needs to include implementation strategies, which include zoning or policy changes to facilitate affordable housing development, site identification for housing, and so the regs get a little more specific there. Some of it is looking at town-owned land that, where the town would encourage the development of affordable housing, but then you can also be identifying other areas of town, whether it's by zoning district or particular privately-owned parcels, that also may make sense for development or redevelopment. The plan, the strategies also need to include the desired characteristics of development insofar as those desired characteristics are not so limiting that housing cannot actually be built in a feasible manner. And then lastly, the implementation strategy should include opportunities for regional partnerships. So those are the requirements of the housing production plan. And I just want to point out, we, I had, I had talked about that 10% goal of the state's target for affordable units under 40B. So that's measured by something called your subsidized housing inventory, or SHI. And to be listed on the SHI, those housing units need to be deed restricted as affordable to households at or below 80% of the HUD area median family income. So for 2023, the, that, the median family income that we're kind of measuring against is about $124,000 annually. So the reason I, the row that is white instead of the blue fill is because that 80% threshold, it cannot exceed that level of affordability to be included on the SHI. And just to give a little bit of context here, in the economic profile of the needs assessment, it goes into a little bit about, you know, what the, what earnings are typical in the various industries that are common, both among the local jobs within your community, but also for residents who may work elsewhere, what sorts of industries they may work in. And so just to give you a context by household size, how that kind of spreads out, those kind of estimated sample households are based on data from the state called ES202 data, and it is essentially, it's a count of jobs on a weekly basis. So we were able to look at it, you'll see in that economic profile, looking at accounting for seasonality. But essentially, the state employers have to report their jobs, the industry, the average weekly wages, and so we use that data to make some, you know, inferences about example households that, in your community that you might find. So I did mention that I wanted to talk about, there's a lot more to the community engagement than just the surveys. As Evan mentioned, we did have two community meetings, but we also had initial interviews at the beginning of the process, and then we also conducted focus groups within the last few weeks, really to focus on the strategies to get, to help us fine-tune them. But I do want to talk about, as I mentioned, the LCP survey that was conducted for the local comprehensive plan process, and I just want to point out some of the questions that relate to housing, which helped inform kind of our understanding also of what the community may see as needs. I know that is very hard to read, but don't worry, I'm going to zoom in on what I want you to look at. So that, this I just, you know, just copying from the, the report that, the survey report that is available. So the, the, community members were asked, which of the following are the most serious problems facing Mashpee today? And so for some context, that blue on the bottom, people identified those as very serious. So in case you are curious what the one that has the most blue is, which my mouse doesn't seem to be showing up on the screen, that is unfortunate, that means I can't direct you. Oh, there it is. Okay. All right. So this one right there, the one that has the most blue, in case you are curious, that is the quality of the open waters, groundwater, and drinking water. But I did want to point out, so when the question was asked about attainable housing, I'm not sure if it was defined in the survey, but attainable housing, kind of broadly speaking, housing that people in your community can acquire. 62% identified that as a very serious or serious problem facing your community, and 8.8 said it was not, not serious or not a problem at all. So there is kind of a fairly strong awareness that the need for housing is a, a strong need within your community. Then there was also a question on the LCP survey, do you believe that Mashpee has a need for more attainable, affordable, and workforce housing? So 70% of the survey respondents said yes. What type of housing do you think Mashpee needs? So almost 50% indicated that Mashpee, again, this is the, the local comprehensive plan survey, so almost 50% indicated that Mashpee needs more single-family homes, about 40% more duplexes. Almost half of the survey respondents indicated that Mashpee needs more multifamily options. So I will compare this with a similar question that was asked on the HPP survey momentarily, but, you know, as I mentioned, the HPP has to include strategies for regulatory changes to facilitate housing. So there was a question on the LCP survey about, to what extent do you support or oppose each of the following as these relate to, to housing? And I know those are hard to read, but don't worry, I will pop up what I really want you to focus on, which is what had the most support. So 80% of respondents indicated either support or strong support for redevelopment of existing buildings or properties into housing. So we do have some strategies that touch upon that, whether it's commercial properties or larger, single-family homes. Almost two-thirds were either in strong support or support of requiring developers of new housing units to dedicate a portion of units to low- to moderate-income households. Over 60% supported removing regulatory barriers to mixed use in commercial districts, so kind of that top-of-the-shop housing. And then height and density bonuses, so allowing buildings to go taller or have more units, you know, in a given lot, for inclusion of attainable, affordable, or workforce housing. Slightly more than a majority supported that. Now, as I'm sure you're well aware, you know, the town meeting requires more than that majority vote, but it is, it is good to get a sense of what the levels of support were for some of these different suggestions. Then there was also a question about if people would support or oppose town funding being used to pay for a variety of purposes. So the one that has, again, that blue is like that kind of strong support, and so the one that has the most support there, in case you can't read it, it's acquiring additional open space. So that had a lot of support, and then let's, if you look and want to see where, where housing is, it is kind of smack dab in the middle there, so 68.6% supported to some degree using town funding to create attainable, affordable, and workforce housing. So again, that was for purposes of the local comprehensive plan, which is an ongoing process. And then we also conducted a survey focused on housing, and it did not receive as many responses, received a little over 315 responses for the Housing Production Plan Survey. But one of the questions that was asked was if the, the person taking the survey would be able to afford a single-family home at the median sale price in 2022. It's even higher now, it's, you know, through October, I think it was seven, you know, in the 750 or so, but for the, the last available year to date, 675K, and it was, you know, 57% said they would not be able to afford that. And then when we looked at the fair market rents, which is, it's just a way of kind of assessing what area rents may be, I can get into that a little bit in more detail, but it's calculated by HUD for purposes actually of various housing programs and whatnot. But the fair market rents, based on bedroom size, we asked participants if they would be able to afford rent at that price if they were looking, and this, there's a little more affordability there, just under half said they would be able to afford that. So we also asked participants to kind of indicate their level of agreement with both Mashpee as kind of a community, but also the town of Mashpee with regard to its bylaws and regulations and policies. So blue is going to be that kind of strong agreement, and so the, the statement that had the most level of support is that the Mashpee community is welcoming to older adults. That had the most, the highest level of agreement. And then the Mashpee community is welcoming to families with children, slightly less, but the one that had the, the least in terms of that, that idea of being welcoming, the Mashpee community is welcoming to people of all socioeconomic backgrounds. So that's where that housing affordability piece is going to come in. The last two are more specific to, to the town's regulations. So asking if the town's bylaws demonstrate a commitment to social equity, and there was a lot of unsure on that, and that's understandable, it's kind of a broad question, but we, you know, often we think about that in terms of, you know, one of the things is, can people even move to your community? And then we also asked about commitment to natural, natural resource protection and environmental stewardship. So there was a little more kind of understanding and saying, yes, okay, I do know that the town has some, some bylaws that provide for that. So we also asked about the different housing types, and so I actually want to jump ahead just in the interest of time to get more into the specific housing types to compare to that question that was on the LCP survey. So you'll recall that there had been a pie chart about the types of housing that the community needs more of. So there was less agreement on the HPP survey that the community needed more single-family detached homes, so I'm going to put those two side by side. So the, the bar graph is what was asked on the Housing Production Plan Survey, and then that pie chart was the LCP survey. So there's, you know, what, what we see there is the blue being not enough, those, the one where there was kind of the most assessment of there isn't enough of this was the accessory dwelling units and multifamily. But in either of those situations, it wasn't a majority saying there's not enough of these. Just a couple more to emphasize which of the following housing initiatives are important to you, I'm just going to read the top five. So helping people stay in year-round housing that is affordable to them. So that's important because within the framework of a housing production plan that's about creating and preserving affordable units, there's not always room for strategies about helping people stay in their housing within that framework. You can still include them in the plan, and we have, you'll see in the draft strategies, there are strategies relating to that, but that was a top, a clear top priority, ensuring that new housing is sustainably built, and the question specified in terms of environment, helping people stay in the community as they age, creating housing with a mix of price ranges, and then creating more housing options or choice. So those are just the top five. There was an open response question about barriers to housing, and these kind of read in an awkward way because really, we were just searching for terms that were used within the open responses. And so the, the biggest barrier to affordable housing that was identified were things referring to cost and price. Behind that was the lack of, lack of inventory. People talked about that in reference to also availability of land, but also availability of housing stock. So I just, I, as I mentioned in the housing needs assessment, I have just a few things I wanted to point out in the interest of time. There's so much more in the document if you haven't had a chance to read it, so just understand if you, if you're saying, you know, this isn't addressed in this presentation, it very well may be addressed in the plan. But just to give you kind of a sense of what your, your housing profile is, Mashpee compared to the county is, is overall, a lot of the housing stock is newer, built 1980 or later, and that kind of corresponds with how your population growth occurred. But, you know, most of those are single-family homes, you also have a lot of condominiums compared to other communities, surrounding communities. We wanted to look at the style of the single-family homes because if we're, if we have strategies relating to conversion, it's important to understand what your existing stock is, because most likely conversion would be limited to larger housing, larger units. And so, you know, the, the most common being Cape, of course, and then Ranch. That map, I know it's hard to follow, the, the font is so tiny for the legend, but essentially the, the yellow areas indicate less density, and so those are primarily single-family. Then it goes up to condominiums, a little more orange, other residential types, apartments, and then mixed use with some residential. So that is just kind of a general profile. In terms of your demographics, you know, one of the biggest things we, we noticed is this kind of disproportionate, I would say, shift in households with children in Mashpee as compared to the Cape as a whole. So what you're seeing in this bar graph are the percent of households that have, that had children, 2000, 2010, 2020. So this is a percentage of total households. So in Mashpee, in that 20-year period, that's a very significant decrease, and so you can see the, the lines kind of showing the slope of how much that change has occurred, and so Mashpee, you know, has a pretty extreme difference as compared to even Barnstable County. When we know obviously on Cape, it's, that's a trend that you're seeing, that you're going to see more than the country as a whole, but it is a little bit stronger in Mashpee. And then on the flip side of that, when we looked at the percent of your population, either under 18 or over 55, in this 30-year period, your percent under 18 dropped more than, so that's, in 1990, the orange, it dropped more than Barnstable County as a whole. And then when you look at the percent over 55, it increased more in Mashpee than Barnstable County as a whole. We also just wanted to look at, of course, the housing market. We could get into this so much more, but this is not unique to Mashpee, but I do want to point out that, so this is an ongoing problem everywhere, where typically you would expect to see with mortgage rates so high, the number of sales dropping, which is happening, and then you would hope to see prices come down, but that is not happening yet. So, you know, that remains to be seen, what, how, how this will continue, but looking at that post-COVID last couple of years, the sales, the number of sales dropping, but the prices continuing to increase. In terms of median rents, it's kind of not surprising to me that there was more indication of affordability with regard to rent on the survey, because when we did, granted, a very limited rent survey, because there are so few, the sample size is so small, the median rents in Mashpee for published listings were, were actually a bit lower than that fair market rent that the federal government delineates for this area. And so I did just want to point that out, and I'm not sure, it's a little hard to say how accurate that is, again, based on those very small sample sizes. We did look at affordability gaps, both for renters and owners, if someone wants to purchase a home, so I won't get into, you know, the methodology, I'm happy to answer questions about, but essentially, someone, the median gross rent for, say, a two-bedroom in Mashpee, you could do this for all the bedroom sizes, but for a two-bedroom in Mashpee, the required income to not spend more than 30% of your income on rent and utilities is more than $20,000 annually, higher than your median rent or income in Mashpee. So there's an affordability gap there. In terms of being able to purchase a home, to be able to purchase a home in Mashpee with, granted, the interest rates are a factor here in making this affordability gap so extreme, but also just that the price of the house itself, there's an estimated affordability gap of over $300,000 between what someone earning the area median family income could afford and what those home prices are in your community. We did not actually hear a ton overall about short-term rentals. I was, you know, on the survey, in terms of barriers, that was not identified a ton. But so we still wanted to look at how Mashpee compares to other communities in, you know, in your surrounding area. So you have the highest percentage of total units for seasonal use among your surrounding communities, and then the STRs, the Registered Short-Term Rentals, while that number looks considerably less than, obviously, Falmouth and Barnstable, not surprising, the ratio, and I don't have it in front of me, I didn't put it on the slide, but the ratio of those registered STRs to your total housing units is higher in Mashpee than many of the area communities. And then lastly, what I just wanted to talk about, the regulatory barriers, two of the big things that we focused on were your zoning, because so many of the residential types, where you see special permit, that sounds great, you can do these things by special permit, right? But the little asterisk that you see next to many of those indicates that you can, in fact, only do these things within your current open space incentive development bylaw. So we did identify that as a barrier, because the open space incentive development bylaw is, is cumbersome, and also just, it requires a lot of land. So, and then, of course, the other regulatory barrier that you cannot ignore is water quality. So the, the map that you see there are various provisions for water quality protection, and that's not even including the new Title V designation of nitrogen-sensitive areas, which really covers pretty much- which really covers pretty much the whole town. So, but those are the, your zone twos, your wellhead protection areas, the area of critical environmental concern. And then also it's indicating for your ponds where there is, where there either has been a TMDL established or a body of water that has been determined the town needs to establish TMDLs for. So how do we reconcile these two things? The limiting, the limited zoning and the water quality and the concerns that people have? And so that is, you know, a big task of the plan. I understand you have a public hearing at 6:40. So I'm going to ask Mr. Chair how you would, how you would like to proceed, if you would like people to share if there's particular strategies that they wanted to ask questions about?
I just, I wish, I mean, we could have spent an hour and a half on this to start with. But did anybody have a suggestion on how to, I don't even know how?
Can I, if I may? I just wanted to point out an issue that I wanted to alleviate anybody's panic. There was a mistake on, I'm not sure if it was 58 or 59, but essentially the zoning for housing choice strategy number seven, the last bullet where it talks about striking in your packet, it would say striking the bylaw altogether. I understand the way that reads. It sounds like we're saying striking your entire zoning bylaw and starting from scratch. That's not what it's saying. That was placed in the wrong place. So I, it was meant to go under a different strategy about OSID. So that has been moved on our end, but I just wanted to reassure you on that.
Where does it move to?
Okay, so the strategy it refers to is strategy seven. So there is a strategy relating to kind of auditing your open space incentive development bylaw and looking to see ways that you could make it potentially more user-friendly. And that is where that was intended to go.
So you put it under 14?
I believe it's.
It's under seven. It's under seven, but you're moving it to 14.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Moving it from strategy seven to 14. Thanks, Mary.
Well, gee, I guess we have a problem. We've got to use some land, we've got to build some houses. Change our zoning. I mean, we've been talking about this for how many years?
Ah, I know.
Every year.
Nothing new here.
Now we have a big.
We do have something new. We have two really big things that have changed since we last looked at this. One is climate change, and the other thing is mats of green algae floating down our rivers. And blue-green algae blossoming. Oh, sorry. So there are, there are two things that have changed since we've looked at this. And I did look at the, I did work on the last version of the HPP. And two things have changed, the impacts of climate change and also that our water bodies are polluted. They were getting polluted back then, but now we can actually see them. So there's an awful lot here, Madam Chair and Mr. Chair. I think we need more time.
No question.
To go through this. I'm very concerned about strategy seven and eight. In my humble opinion, they're not protective enough of our waters. And if they were employed, employed would never meet our clean water goals. They really need some work. Otherwise, the plan is pretty impressive up to page 58. And there's only 60 pages there. So I just think we need to look at the survey a little bit more, the results of those workshops, the focus groups, and work on those strategies. And there's zoning strategies. So you know where I'm going on this.
Yeah, I mean, Karen, I mean, as far as, I mean, we literally have like less than five minutes. So, I mean, we can talk about this, but would the planning board be also open? I mean, besides, we go home, we can all digest this a little bit, dig in a little further. And maybe would you be open to having a reconvene, the joint meeting?
Joint meeting, yes.
Discuss it further, the first meeting in January? I think that might be the only way to, otherwise, I don't want to change everything else.
For me, Mr. Chair, I mean, for me, you know, this is a really comprehensive document. And, you know, it sets out some really challenging goals and initiatives it has to hit. So, you know, I feel like this warrants dedicated time to meet, you know, just for discussing this. I don't feel it's something you can chop out in a half hour of, you know, a joint meeting. It's too important of a document. I'm seeing a lot of issues in here that, you know, it raises concerns for me. One question I do have, though, is, you know, what's your margin of error for the census information being accurate as to population counts? Factoring in that, you know, you did the work prior to COVID, you had this influx of people that come to the Cape. I don't think that's accurately, the numbers are accurately capturing the amount of year-round people that live here adequately. So, you know, how do you address that and factor that in?
Would you like me to answer? Okay. So that is a great comment and challenge with doing any planning work right now because what we hear often is not reflected in the census data yet or in the American Community Survey data because that is, well, now current through 2022, but that's based on a five-year average. So the really, often what we hear does not match what the data says. And I have seen that looking at, for example, the short-term rental issue, what we heard is not what the difference between 2010 and 2020 census relays. So some of it is just you have to say in the narrative that the data is not necessarily reflective of what you're hearing and just explaining why that is. The assessor's data makes it very hard to capture some of those things. In terms of the population and households, that is something we can probably follow up on, actually in consultation with, through Evan and the town clerk, just to kind of see how that, the differences that we're seeing there. But in terms of assessment, it's trickier.
One minute. I, the thing that I'd like to call your attention to is paragraph seven on page 58. The last three, striking the bylaw altogether, the one that Alexis struck and moved over to 14.
Yep.
I haven't, I don't know, I must have been sleepwalking or something. I read this today and I read it a couple days ago. Allowing conversion of existing single-family homes to small multifamily homes by special permit, allowing two-family homes by right in residential districts, amending the town cluster development law to add, to allow additional residential uses beyond what is allowed in the underlying zoning. I don't know. I, if this was in part of community engagement and workshops, I wasn't there. I missed this because I find this shocking.
So just for the sake of time, Evan, you got to, you have?
I just would like to respond to that particular comment in general. We just went through the survey information to you. People spoke loudly and clearly through both all of our workshops and through the development of our surveys to know that they desire more housing diversity. We don't have that. So if we don't deploy these strategies, we would never achieve that goal.
I think they just need to be fine-tuned. I know what you're saying, but those three, I cringed when I read them too. It doesn't, oh, go ahead.
I think you're right. I think we all cringed.
But I think it's a, it's a workable start. You know, I think, I think that we can devise and come up with, we're a pretty smart group of people. We can get strategies that are going to get us there. It's just we have such a water pollution problem. There's absolutely no way people are going to pay for searing in this town if they think we're going to allow a doubling of our zoning and density townwide. There's just no way that's going to happen. So we, we have to take it always from the clean water perspective.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I make one just reminder to everybody?
Quick one, yeah.
Okay, so you, you have bedroom limits by square lot size, and this does not override that. So allowing, you know, if you, if someone has a single-family home with X amount of bedrooms on a lot and it gets converted into smaller condos or something like that, you still can't, you can't suddenly then have more bedrooms in that unit. You're still limited by Board of Health or Sewer Commission regulations. So I did just want to clarify that.
Good comment.
Exactly. We need to clarify it in here, and we might not want to go there until our waters are clean.
All right, can I say, I know, because I got a question.
You can get more bedrooms if you update your September system to an alternative system, I believe.
Yeah, so. So what everybody, so Karen, Chair, would you be agreeable to maybe setting up another time?
Definitely.
And actually?
Yes, certainly.
And it'll be just exclusively for this?
This, Karen, no.
Because we can't be, we can't do this on 30 minutes, this is ridiculous.
Is there somebody from the Sewer Commission that could help us through some of these questions too?
How about we, yeah, that's.
Well, that's the one thing that you've been leaving out is that we're doing the process of having the number one facility being built, waste, the sewer system and the collection system, and we're going into phase two. So it's not that we're not moving forward with the, with, you're saying we can't build houses because we don't have wastewater treatment. But we do. We are going to have wastewater treatment, and we're moving forward. So this is, this is just a matter of time. It's not that we can't get smaller lots because we can, because we have wastewater plants in the works. We can move forward. We don't have to move forward immediately. We can set a plan as the, as the wastewater treatments are established. Then we can expand and reduce the size of the lots and allow for more housing and still protect the town of Mashpee.
All right, so just, I want to, real quick, you mentioned, I'm sorry, you mentioned something about the Sewer Commission. The only thing is, I hope you're not suggesting we bring more people. I think right now, just between the two, two boards, I think it's going to be.
I was on a focus group with Meredith Harris. And there were some strategies in here that I thought looked really good until she explained to me how we wouldn't be able to fit into our nitrogen management plan with them. So there's got to be something. That's all.
We get that idea, John, and have people submit their questions if we had a time to. However, we're not saying the same thing 15 times. People who are not interested, send your information.
Could you forward the slide deck to members as well?
Yes.
So Evan, do you need, you mentioned about going out to the public as well, correct? Like, so you don't, do you need a recommendation to do that now? Or is that something?
Well, the one thing I wanted to clear, well, if there are going to be significant changes to strategies, we're not going to be ready to put this to the public, in my opinion. So it would compromise our current projected timeline. Now, I just want to make two final statements, and I suppose we would leave it at that. This is a housing production plan. One. And the mechanisms contemplated in this particular slide that everyone seems to have an issue with are about exploration of these mechanisms. It is not mandating anything. It is about exploring these strategies within the current constraints of our comprehensive watershed nitrogen management plan, infrastructural limitations, and everything else.
Great point. It's a suggestion to look at and explore. I, it's, we're not changing the zoning and we're not changing everything. So, so can we, can you wait until we have some, we convene a meeting until like early January? Is that what?
I'm available.
Chair?
Sure, absolutely.
That sound like?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what do we, can we, we don't have to pick a date now, do we? Or do you?
When's your next meeting? Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to get them to dates.
Do we, is it?
Our next meeting is January 17th. Does that help you?
That's yours. So I'm thinking we'd probably try to meet before that, right? For a convene, a joint meeting?
Why don't we meet during next Patriot game because no one's going to watch us?
Our next meeting is January 8th.
January 8th?
Is when we're scheduled.
January 8th.
So we're going to meet separately? I mean, no, not on our meeting night, a separate night?
At a meeting exclusively to discuss this. But if our meeting is July, January 8th?
Depending on what you have on the board there, who is this?
I mean, the other thing, I just want to put it out there, and I did talk to Evan way, way back, that some towns, they have the housing committee write the plan. It goes to the planning board, it gets all worked out, and then it goes to the board of selectmen. That's the other thing you can do. You can do it in steps. If you can't get a joint, if the joint meeting isn't working, you can, it has to have a vote by the planning board, then a vote by the board of selectmen. So they were cleverly trying to merge that vote all in once. But if scheduling is not going to work, you can separate those. I mean, I would rather be all together, but.
So your next meeting is 16th?
17th.
17th. I guess it all, a lot of it depends on, just on. Depend upon our agenda or your agenda, and, but we, I think we just.
Unless we met on your select board meeting day earlier than 6 o'clock.
But then I think we were going to run right into the meeting anyways. A separate day.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
On the day before.
Go ahead.
So our originally planned timeline between tonight and our hopeful, our desired adoption, which doesn't appear to be feasible at this point, was that, so the planning board meets on the 3rd of January as well.
Oh, 3rd, okay.
So the, we had contemplated independent reviews subsequent to night of each entity. The planning board would have the opportunity to further discuss this on the 3rd and on the 20th. The select board meets earlier in that week. So kind of pursuing that same timeframe, there would be two meeting opportunities of each entity to deliberate on this independently. And if there were a joint meeting opportunity that was feasible, that's great too. I just wanted to make clear that the planning board has two meetings, and so do you.
Okay, that's, that was actually, good heavens, because, so if you guys, if the planning board is meeting on the 3rd, we're meeting on the 8th. Could we possibly pull together a meeting after the 8th if we deemed necessary?
Yeah.
Depending upon the feedbacks?
Yeah.
I'll touch base.
And if we have it on our January 3rd agenda and make some progress, some of those concerns might melt away.
Like you said, yeah.
It is the zoning strategy.
Karen, I'll get back with you after your third, the meeting on the 3rd, and then our meeting on the 8th.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss a potential meeting following that.
Very good.
Okay? Everybody good? Yeah, there's a motion to adjourn the joint meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, he opened it up. Thank you. Nice to see you. I have the vote on conscience. I lift your pump. I know. We get to leave.
These are just my notes. Just open them.
Have a nice holiday, everybody. You too, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis. I'll go right, I'll go right back to it.
Back to you later.
You too, Dennis.
So we're going to go right to our public hearing. So we're going to jump right to our 6:40 public hearing.
Which is at 6:50. The Select Board acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Mashpee will conduct public hearing on Monday, December 18, 2023, at 6:50, 6:40, but it's now 6:50 in the Walk Point Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Grape Neck Road North, Mashpee. The purpose of the said hearing is to consider modifications to the weekday entertainment license, including Saturday, of Valuated Crust LLC doing business as Wicked Restaurant, 35F South Street, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. The modification would allow one amplifier for one-to-three-person band, live music and recorded music outdoors until 12:00 a.m. through December 31st, 2023. The public is invited to attend and to be present. Any questions, comments, or concerns may have pertaining to this license. You may submit comments and questions via email to bos@mashpema.gov prior to the meeting. I think we have Christine.
Would you like to come up? If you don't mind, just take a seat, yeah. Just can you give us an explanation of what and why you, what you're requesting?
So I believe that we were given the go-ahead and we were all set for the rest of 2023. It came to our attention that we were not all set, and it kind of got a little confusing there. We did speak and we had the fee waived and we, you know, were all set as far as the permitting and licensing. the permitting and licensing, but then we halted all entertainment, you know, that we had scheduled after that, once we were told that it was not, in fact, all set.
What it was, it was the licensing was for the.
Year twenty twenty-four.
Twenty, right, for the whole year of twenty-four, but for the rest of the, this year, for the entertainment license. You had it for the TV, for sports, but not for live amplified.
Okay.
So that's what we're going for tonight.
For the live entertainment.
Entertainment for now.
Yes.
Until the end of the year.
Yes.
Okay, please.
And is this, and again, this is all indoors?
Yes.
I'm assuming it's.
Yeah, it's very new as well.
Does anybody have any questions?
Nope. Great idea.
In the audience?
Anybody from the audience?
I make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Yes. Aye. I make a motion.
Unanimous?
No, 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 we have to make a motion.
Huh?
To do it. Now I make a motion to approve the entertainment license of Elevated Crust LLC doing business as Wicked Restaurant, thirty-five F South Street, Mashpee, for the entertainment license till the end of December twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
First and second, any discussion? Kayla?
Yes.
Yes. Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Unanimous? All set.
Thank you. So as far as twenty twenty-four, we just have to go through the same process again?
No, it's already done.
So for twenty twenty-four, we are all set until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-four, because we're still in twenty-three.
That's right.
Okay, so I'll see you again next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Only because we all said yes everywhere.
See, it's down, that's why you have to do it.
All right, so back up to our discussion approval of the following minutes, Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three, regular session.
So moved. Second.
All right, first and second, any discussion in the minutes? Not hearing any? Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
I caught you.
Yes.
Yes, sitting in front of a call my name.
That was good, David.
All right, I think next up is discussion approval of modifications of weekday entertainment license.
Nope.
Nope, that's the, all set, right? Discussion and possible approval of sending a letter of support for the proposal submitted by the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, APCC, for NOAA's Coastal Habitat Restoration and Resilience Grants for Tribes and Underserved Communities.
Hey, Daniel?
We all have a letter in front of us.
And Daniel's sitting at the table.
Okay. Daniel, go right ahead.
How's it going? So for the record, my name is Daniel Kent, I'm the Assistant Conservation Agent for the town of Mashpee. So we have engaged with the tribe and with APCC to gather together as a partnership to have the application go before NOAA for underserved communities grant for three million dollars to address the issues of the Mashpee River. Now, this is not to actually address the issues of the Mashpee River in construction or anything of that nature, it's to get feasibility studies, cultural awareness, public outreach, as well as community building and tribal capacity building for this to go into the future for construction phases of the projects that need to be done on the upper Mashpee River. There's a couple segments to this draft, so segment one is Mashpee Pond, Mashpee Wake Beach Pond to the Fish Ladder. That is the, that's south from Wake Beach Mashpee Pond to the Fish Ladder, and that encompasses Mill Pond, and there's a lot of sedimentation, there's a lot of predation going on during the migratory season for all the herring. If you are a birder and you want to see some fascinating birds, take advantage of a unnatural situation, then you can go there and watch it all day long during the migratory season. So, but it's not good for the herrings, especially since their numbers are dwindling down drastically. Since twenty nineteen, they've gone down about thirty-three to forty percent lower since twenty nineteen alone. So the numbers absolutely need to be addressed, and it is extremely important cultural resource for the tribe, and they're a very important member of this community here in Mashpee. So that's, that's the first segment. The second segment will be from the Fish Ladder down to Asher's Path. Asher's Path was an old paved road that went directly through the river. From what I can gather, buses traveled on that road up until about two thousand and one, directly through the river. So there is still pavement going in the river right now, there is still a lot of sedimentation, the river is widening out there. So there's that section at Asher's Path, and then north of that, there's Washburn Pond. That's an old cranberry bog that we're also going to look at addressing for a full bog renovation, something similar that, maybe not similar, it's going to depend on what the assessment says, something similar to chop-chake bog into quashnit that we are applying for right now through another NOAA grant. So that's a bog that needs attention, and at that section as well, there's old wooden structures where we're having very high mortality rates of migratory herring in the river. During migratory season, you can see about one thousand, two thousand herring building up between, behind these wooden structures, and there's anywheres from a dozen to two dozen that are in there that are not living anymore, so that's something that needs to be addressed. Removing that wooden structure and bringing the river back to a more natural setting is something that's absolutely needed, and a more natural setting is the whole scope of this project, while incorporating natural setting with what the river used to be through cultural knowledge and through cultural information from the tribe as well. So, and then segment three is something that we're going to look into for the future. We need a full assessment of segment three, that is from Asher's Path to Route twenty-eight Culvert. The Route twenty-eight Culvert is, has failed, that is the state highway, so that is something that needs to be addressed. If that culvert were to collapse into the river, there would be no migration by any fish, by sea-run brook trout, by American eel, or by the herring. So that needs to be addressed, and a feasibility study is the first step to addressing it.
How bad is that culvert?
So we took, I took pictures a couple weeks back, I'd say it's about three to four feet separated, the face of the culvert from the actual culvert itself, to the point where there's full-fledged trees thirty feet tall already growing out of it. So that needs to be addressed, not just for the safety of the migratory fish, but also for the road itself. If that were to, something were to happen there, I think we can all imagine that'd be an issue. So that's a state thing, and since that's state, we are addressing that through hydrology and feasibility study with this application, and then next year, early next year, there will be a fish passage grant coming out for a very, a large amount of money that we are going to reach out to the state and try to work with them to apply for, using this feasibility and hydrology study that will be assessed in the future coming three years. So, so those are the three segments that we are targeting for this grant, and incorporated in those three segments will be a multitude of work that needs to be done, from ecological restorations to plantings, to restoring buffer zones, riparian zones, all that, to making sure the hydrology and the water temperature go to the levels that are actually needed. Right now, the water temperature in the Mashpee River is very high, and the majority of that is because of Mill Pond. There's very low circulation in Mill Pond, and it's very shallow, so during the summer, when the hot temperatures really heat up that pond because it's so shallow, all that heat goes down the water, the river in one flow, and that raises the temperature of the river drastically, so fish and wildlife has brought that to our attention, and that's something that we want to also address with any restoration needs, is making sure the hydrology and the water temperature are going to be accurate for all the fish in the river. The three species we're mainly targeting in this application are the herring, the sea-run brook trout, and the eel. Those are the three big diadrotomous migratory fish that really need attention in this river. As of right now, the Mashpee River is the number, I think it's the number-one river in Cape Cod for sea-run brook trout. It is considered one of the crown jewels of cold-water habitats in Cape Cod for rivers, and I think that's something that we need to make sure we maintain for the town, for whole aspects of the town, from tourism to the ecology to the environmental needs that the residents need. So today and before you, asking for a letter of support. This application will not cost the town any money, so I know that's always a good thing to hear. So I'm a father, so when it comes down to money, it's number one for me, as you can imagine, so that's for certain. But with this, the NRCS is doing an assessment right now of Mill Pond to rebuild the Fish Ladder. So they are, we are using that as a leverage so that the town, APCC, and the tribe won't have to put any of their own funds for this application, and the three million dollars will help with the capacity building, as well as help with all the hydrology and feasibility studies that would be needed to go on for that. So, and this is a three-year time period, so everything needs to be done within three years.
I motion to recommend a letter of, and to send a letter of support for the proposal, APCC's proposal for the NOAA Coastal Habitat Restoration and Resilience Seek Grant for Tribes and Underserved Communities.
I second that motion.
We have a second by everybody? Unanimous?
Yeah, yeah, no question.
Oh, any discussion? I, well said, I, you know.
Thank you.
That was action-packed, and, I mean, I don't know how much more to talk about.
Important, important work.
Right, this is great.
I think it's great that, you know, it really shows collaboration between, you know, the APCC, NRCS, the town, Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, and the tribe, and, you know, anything we can do to try to excel restoration of some of these habitats and natural environments, you know, kudos to all the work just going into it, and thank all the parties for stepping up and doing it.
Absolutely, I will purvey that message.
That's not enough. David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Unanimous?
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Great work.
Thank you.
Great efforts, keep it up. Thank you. Presentation and discussion of Visitor's Center, nine sixty-six Falmouth Road, Friends of the National Wildlife Refuge.
I'm just going to put the slides up, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, I'm Glenn Davis, President of the Friends of the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge, here with Mary Kate Fox, past President of the Friends Group, currently the Treasurer, also Rep. David Viera, another past President of the Friends Group, and Director Emeritus of the Friends Group currently. I'm going to go through this presentation kind of quickly. Bring it up, Ken.
I'm trying.
If you don't mind, just make sure you do talk in the microphone, I can't tell if you're that far away from the, just from the microphone for the public.
Yeah.
So they can hear you, that's all.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So, yeah, like I said, I do want to go through this quickly, allow time for questions, you can go to the next slide, actually. Just real quickly, an overview of the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. It was established just under thirty years ago, six thousand acres mostly in Mashpee, also in Falmouth. It is managed by a partnership of nine separate entities, very unusual in the National Wildlife Refuge system in that the town of Mashpee is and has always been a key element in that partnership. But even after close to thirty years, we have no visitor center, no place, no central place for the public to learn about or enhance their, their experience with the refuge. Yeah, next slide. So why do we want a visitor center? Just to go through some, some of the broad needs here, we're looking to enhance the visitor experience, strengthen the collaboration among the partners, showcase the contributions of the individual refuge partners, as well as opportunities for public engagement, youth involvement, outreach and education, trail connections, and also with greater visibility for the refuge and for the Friends Group, it allows us to better support the refuge partners, which is really core to our, our mission. The proposed visitor center would feature an information desk, outdoor exhibits, kiosks, and outdoor pavilion, classroom and meeting space, pollinator gardens, greenhouse, office space storage, center of operations for the Friends Group, a nature store, and even though we're still in very preliminary stages of, of looking at building details and options, we do want to strive to adhere to a Cape Cod style and character for any building that does go, go up. Benefits to Mashpee and the community, borrowing from the select board's webpage, the Mashpee's vision to live in harmony with one another and with nature, we think this is a great opportunity to demonstrate this. When you look at a map of Mashpee, the Mashpee Refuge stands out, it's obviously a very large part of the area, but there's no single place that someone can say, I've, I've been here, I've been to the Mashpee Refuge, and we want to highlight that and reinforce the collaboration of the partners, provide visual examples for the public of gardens, native plantings for homeowners, businesses, other organizations, as well as a venue to collaborate with other organizations like the Trustees of Reservations, the APCC, the Natural Resources Department of the Mass Natural, Natural Resources, National Guards, sorry. So nine sixty-six Falmouth Road, it's about a mile and a half south of the Rotary, adjacent to the South Cape Beach, or South Cape Resort, I think is the name. You can see there are tennis courts in the top-left picture, all the way up top there. It's just under two and a half acres, there's an existing parking lot. We would propose to clear about three-quarters of an acre, still providing a wooded buffer to the street, to the other butters, and, as, as well as any, any trees that are removed would be replaced with pollinator habitat, and we'd also like to repurpose any trees that are taken down for, for various purposes. And what we're looking for tonight is really very simple, we'd like to get a, an endorsement by the select board. The concept has already been endorsed by the Conservation Commission. We also have the unanimous support of the refuge partnership, but we'd like to be, to have you be able to authorize us to negotiate with the town manager how to make this happen, how to structure, how we work with the property, and there are, there are various options, I think our preferred option is probably a twenty-year lease, but that's, that's open for discussion and negotiation, and also to discuss building and design details with the town manager. Funding options, we have various options for funding, some of which might come from the existing partnership, some is through Friends funds. We would also apply for CPA funding, probably in the spur, I guess this would be in next Falls Town meeting. And with that, I'd like to open it up to your questions, comments, and see where we go with this.
So, Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This concept actually started quite a while ago with the former town planner approaching me about this particular spot, and then Mr. Davis, the Assistant Conservation Agent, came in to see me, I forget how many weeks ago, but it was a very valuable conversation. I appreciated the presentation, and I wholeheartedly support this, and would request that the board authorize me to continue. At that particular meeting, I did say that we got to go before the board, and we would obviously answer any questions.
So is this, so this is like, I'm trying to get my bearings, is this abutting the tennis courts?
Well, it's.
It's directly across.
Directly across the street.
Oh, okay.
Not, not across twenty-eight.
Not across twenty-eight, but it's.
On, on, of that road.
And it's town property, obviously.
It is, right.
It's Leclair Village, when you go into Leclair Village, that road, it'll be on the right-hand side across from the tennis courts.
Perfect spot for it.
It is.
That's what we feel.
Yeah.
Because that's Newark Towne, wasn't it? But didn't the town take that?
Ninety-seven.
Those parcels over?
Ninety-seven.
That had to do with a bank, a bank foreclosure on the property, and we.
Regarding South Cape, yeah, okay. I get the.
Yeah, so this property was transferred over through, however that was, and then it was never dictated since then on whether the cons comm would have it, or the select board, or if it would be a land bank or anything of that nature. So right now, it's just under the jurisdiction of the select board with no other protections on the property.
Good. I support that.
Yeah, and you just, you just gave your endorsement, correct?
Absolutely. Like I said, we had a great discussion about this several weeks ago, and I think it's a good opportunity, and I asked for the. and I think it's a good opportunity, and I asked for the board to authorize me to negotiate.
Motion to authorize Mr. Collins to negotiate.
Second.
Any discussion?
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Dan, did, did you say that on the slide presentation, the area encompassed in blue is, that's, that's all gonna be cleared?
Yeah, so that's proposal, just to be cleared for now, and the thought of that was, was in case there was any future expansion of anything the town would want, or anything the partners group would want, that the area could already be cleared, it could also be used for a gathering area, for exterior outdoor classrooms, outdoor meeting areas as well, you know, via picnic tables or things like that. I know in their, in their thoughts as well, there was also a pavilion that would be on site, I don't believe that was the location of it.
It's in there somewhere, we'd also like to open it up to sunlight, both for solar options for any building, but also for any pollinator gardens, greenhouses that we put in.
The, I guess the first thing that comes to mind is, you know, the town's clearing a lot of land, and when I think through that, I hear of a, a lot of tribal members that are struggling for affordability and things, and a lot of the tribal members still burn wood, and I would love for the, the town to adopt a policy to where any hardwood is transferred over to the tribe to try to help offset heating costs for those members that still burn wood. I think that would be a great policy to include, you know, when I saw the, all the trees that were cut when they were clearing for the wastewater, that, you know, a lot of the companies just chipped that stuff nowadays, and it could have heated a lot of homes, so that's why I'm bringing it forward now, for consideration of the town to adopt a policy that recognizes the, the tribe's connection to those natural resources, as wood lots within Mashpee were all over this town, and, you know, families, that's how they made a living, is selling wood and using wood for their, to heat their homes and things, and now they don't have access to that, a lot of their families' properties have been tax-taken themselves, and so, you know, if the town could do that, it would be, go a long way, I think, with tribal members to help assist them with offsetting heating costs.
I mean, I'm not against, you know, necessarily, I, I think if we could figure out some type of system, if we're gonna cut down a tree, then utilize the wood, but I would think if we can figure out a system that any member of Mashpee can utilize the wood if they see fit.
What I can do is, I can check with legal counsel and bring a proposed policy for your consideration at a future meeting for you to review.
Okay.
Okay.
The other question I had was around building design, you know, do you have any kind of concept, drawings of what it's gonna, I, I, I wouldn't want it to look like a modern kinda, I know the recreation building over there is kinda.
It's not.
It's not the biggest attraction from architectural aesthetic, but, you know, a colonial, something that fits in with the nature is, I guess, would be my only preference to ensure that it doesn't go towards a contemporary or anything like that.
We, we discussed that.
Yeah, no, we, we definitely wanna make sure that it's got some character, again, we haven't really gotten into the building details, we've looked into options, some modular, modular options, we've, we've started looking at other visitor centers that have been built that U.S. Fish and Wildlife has plans to, I don't know if we've, I don't have any pictures of those in the presentation, but we have seen some, some pictures from, there was one in New Jersey, one in Rhode Island, that were nice-looking buildings that would, that would fit in well with the character there. So we're not looking for a modern building that's gonna stick out like a sore thumb.
Yeah, we don't, we don't really wanna have modern buildings there, something more Cape Cod-y, I think the best way I could term it is something that's character of place, and the place is the town of Mashpee, not the town of any other town in the Cape, you know, so we wanna keep to the character of place for this town, that is, you know, an environmental thing, outdoorsy, that is also gonna encompass everything within town, so that's, that's one thing we wanna make sure of.
I think there was a mention in, I'm not surprised, with Mr. Viera in the house, scouts, so if you look at like scout camps, I, I think they, they do pretty well to build structures that don't look like modern houses there, I think something along those lines, I think you'll come, come together, and assuming visibility off of twenty-eight something, with signage, I'm not saying the building right on the main road, but something with the visibility, cause, you know, you drive right by and some, you wanna know that there's a sign there that that's.
And for the signage, it's definitely gonna be on twenty-eight.
Right, right.
There's gonna be a nice-sized sign on there that's gonna be designed, it's gonna be designed, I believe, to the standard refuge for what's being used for fish and wildlife right now, I can't remember the colors off the top of my head, I think it was a bluish.
Well, they're actually changing, so, so I'm not sure.
So, but it's gonna be up there.
Something welcoming with the, you know, visitors welcome, and, you know, the, just something.
The buil, the building itself probably won't be visible.
Right, no, no.
From twenty-eight, but we would have signed it.
Yeah, just, I just, I know that just, I'm just thinking about myself driving along, there's that strip that you can just, I don't wait to push by, I didn't even know it was there. And it, you know, I, that's all, just take it for what I'm saying. So we had, we have motion and second, any further discussion?
I guess the only other, last question I had is, you know, I, I know the tribe is a part of the National Wildlife Group, did they chime in and endorse the project, or I guess, is, they did?
At the partners meeting a couple of weeks ago, or is that last week?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. Yeah, was there, Jason, Jason was there?
Jason Stiding?
Yeah, and yes, there were, there was no opposition from any of the partners about this proposal, and there were a lot of, the partners are all not only supportive of it, but willing to commit to certain resources, whatever they can do in terms of helping to build it, staff it.
And fund it.
Manage it, so, yes, and that came from the tribe as well.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So, call to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
Huh?
I said I'm ready to vote, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I don't know if you're asking me for any questions, yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good job, guys.
What a resource, a nice resource.
Discussion and approval of the official names for Mashpee Ancient Burial and Mashpee Historical Commission.
I didn't know there were snacks up here.
They brought them in just for you.
I was gonna say, well, thank you, whoever that is, and so folks, there are little snacks up here if you get hungry. Good evening.
Good evening.
You have our letter requesting that the select board name our ancient burial grounds with an official title, so that they are all recognized and known by one name. When we started to work on these different burial grounds, we kept hearing all these different names, everyone had their own name for them, but as we're trying to reclaim them from the weeds and the trees and the bushes, and get them properly surveyed and surrounded by a fence, have any of you seen the old Lake, well, I'm gonna call it, the newborn, hopefully, ancient burial ground up in Lakewood? That's what we're planning on trying to do for the other three ancient burial grounds. So we would like to ask your permission to officially name the adequate, the Bourne Cemetery, the Pocnet Cemetery, and what one did I forget?
Adequate.
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 Adequate Cemetery. Do you have any questions?
What about the, the Boardley up on Katuut?
We don't have that listed as part of it.
I mean, it's in much better condition than the three you have mentioned here, I just didn't know if you.
Well, we'll take a, we'll take a look, cause in our archive notes, we had four cemeteries listed, and I don't remember seeing a Boardley, but we'll look into it.
I think it's the Boardley Cemetery up on, on Katuut Road. Katuut Road is, you're going towards Sandwich, there's on the left.
I know there's the Goodwell, Goodspeed Cemetery in Sandwich.
Is that what they call it? No, this is before the, it's not Sandwich, that's all right, I, I can follow up with you kinda.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that, yeah, we didn't have it on our list, but if it's a Mashpee Ancient Cemetery, we'll add it to our list.
Are, the cemetery's gonna be delineated with signage?
Yes, we're doing the fencing, and we're talking now about putting on a sign for each of, excuse me, each of the cemeteries, and we can't do that until we have permission of what we're gonna call them.
And it'll be by this, by these names.
Yes, by those names.
I think it's a great project, and I think it lends itself to further projects within those areas, maybe information kiosk and things like that to kinda tell a story about some of the people.
Right.
That lived in those areas and their relationship and successes within Mashpee and all that they brought, some of those families.
Right, we, we talked about, maybe on the signage, doing the names of the people, and, and then it, it got into a book. So, yes, we are, it's on, on our list of things to do.
Mr. Collins.
The Mashpee River signs look great, and don't forget about our signs here.
I wouldn't ever.
I gotta always remind you.
Say that again?
I, I have to always remind you.
A motion to reclaim and restore the three ancient burial grounds and provide appropriate signage and to identify them.
Second.
All right, we have first and second, any further discussion? I think it's great, I'll start it off, Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you, we'll get to the signs.
Great, Cheryl. Certification of hiring process of firefighter, paramedic Blake Wilson.
Mr. Chair, the memo is self-explanatory, but essentially all of the policies and practices of the town were adhered to, and HR has prepared all of the information consistent with the appointing authorities recommendation for this process to be certified, so.
Looking for a motion to certify the process.
It's just certifying the process.
Okay.
A motion to certify the process.
Second.
All right, first and second, all in favor, Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes, that was quick. Papa coming. Come on up. Everybody else is gonna have to wait. Did you look behind you? Everybody else behind you has to wait.
I know, I see.
Nobody.
They are left.
You gonna do it again?
Lynn Barbie Surf Drive, as you all can imagine, I am not a big hiker, however, I had family visiting me over Thanksgiving, young people who live in New York City, and they said, where can we go for a nice walk outside? And luckily, I happened to have a little brochure for the Wildlife Refuge, they were gone for hours, they came back saying how wonderful it was, it was a great, I mean, this was one of those mild days over the holiday, how wonderful it was, it was great, I think this is really a wonderful thing that we're doing because I live nearby there, and it's totally, I'm gonna say underused, but it's really not recognized for what an incredible valuable resource it is, and I think this is a great thing to have, the visitor's center, because then people like me will have more than just a little brochure to say, oh, well, if you go down the street, there's something there, so, I mean, I, so I, I just wanted to say thank you very much for this, because I think it's going to be a real addition to our town, and will give a place for people like folks coming from New York City to say, you want a beautiful walk? Go to the Wildlife Refuge, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for saying so. All right, communications, correspondence, new business, discussion and approval of the following resignations, Human Services Committee, Member-at-Lodge, term expires June 30th, 2024, Sam McDonald. And.
A motion to approve the resignation of Sam McDonald to the Human Services Committee with a letter of regret, please.
Second.
I have a first and I have a second, any discussion? Not hearing any, Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Also, Sewer Commission, Member-at-Lodge, term expires June 30th, 2026, and that's Erin Copeland.
A motion, go ahead.
Motion to appoint Erin Copeland.
No, resignation.
Oh, appointment to, I mean, motion to accept the resignation of Erin Copeland from the Sewer Commission, Member-at-Lodge, term expiring June 30th, 2026, with a letter of gratitude.
Second.
All right, first and second, discussion, not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Discussion and approval of reappointment, Bonneville County Home Consortium Council, term expires February 1st, 2024, or actually, no, it's term February 1st, 2024 to January 31st, 2027, Gary Schuman.
He's not here. It's a reappointment.
Yeah, it's just a reappointment.
It's just a reappointment.
Yep.
I make a motion to reappoint Gary Schuman to the Bonneville County Home Consortium Council, term February 1st, 2024 through January 31st, 2027.
I'll second.
All right, first and second, any discussion? David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Additional topics, liaison reports.
Mr. Chair? The CPC met on 12/14, there are two open positions on, on the CPC committee, there were three very qualified applicants, all three applicants were recommended to be moved forward to this board, so.
Oh, boy, it's, it's a good problem to have, I mean.
It is a good problem to have, there were three very, very qualified people, so all three will be coming to this board, I don't know if there's a way we could send question, possible questions to you so that we standardize our questions where we have three people, so, just something to think about. Also, with regard to the IMA, the town of Falmouth made changes to the IMA, we, we knew they had it and they were having town council look at it and the town manager, the changes were more for clarification rather than substantive, and that came back to both Mashpee and Sandwich and town councils, and the town managers working with town council on that. GHD is, has submitted its contract to get the notice of intent out for our watershed plan, that date for the Department of Environmental Protection has extended that date from January 8th to July 8th, so we should be in, in good shape getting that in with plenty of time, that too is with town council, so.
Thank you, any other liaison reports?
No.
I, I have a report, the Environmental Oversight Committee submitted a request, an application through the CPC to help fund and offset and defray cost for updating the open space and recreation plan, the Environmental Oversight Committee saw that as a, something that we need to kinda guide the direction of the town and environmental protection and things, and starting with the update of that, that hasn't been updated, I think, since 1997?
2006?
Two, 2006.
2009, 2009.
It was somewhere in there, 2007 or '09 is when it was actually last updated, it's supposed to be updated every five years, without that, you're not, you're ineligible, I guess it phased out in, I think, 2016, we got a. We got a couple of extensions, and it's, until we get it updated, then we're not able to go after certain state funding because you don't have that plan in place. And so we start as a priority. We put forward an application. It did go and submitted by the Environmental Oversight Committee, but it's actually in collaboration and coordination with the Conservation Department and Natural Resources Department are both going to help work with it. Andrew's going to be the fiscal administrator of it through his department. It does include working with Evan. It meets his schedule. He's, I guess, endorsed it and putting together a letter of support. The Conservation Commission voted for, approved a letter of support, and I'm not sure, I think the Planning Board did as well. I'm not positive on that one, recalling from memory. But it's been supported by several different departments, programs, and committees.
Committee who would normally put that forward?
It would probably come out of Evan's department, I believe, as town planning, updating something like that, but the Conservation Commission's going to, I mean, Conservation Department's going to kind of take the administrative role in that and be the fiscal sponsor through the town resources, if appropriated, to do it. Essentially, the way the proposal's being framed is just to pay for a technical consultant to come in and kind of do the, similar to what they're doing with all these other updates to plans, is bring in a third party to help crowdsource information and data and really do a comprehensive deep dive into...